Okay, it's October 22nd, 6:00 PM. We're gathered for our regular select board meeting. I'd like to open the meeting with a roll call. Select persons present are Jeff Peters and Mike Gould. Josh will be absent for part of the meeting. Employees Brian Mullis, Michelle Nichols, Kelsey Shannon, Matt Blockler. Now we'll go around the room. Everybody just state your name without over here.
Drusilla Stone and Jerry Peters.
Gary Peters.
Gary Ann Loss.
What was it again?
Gary Ann Loss.
Dennis Campbell.
Oh, me and Brian. Jonathan Donald.
George Hill.
We missed you, George. You're hiding.
I'm comfortable.
Yeah. Okay, let's start our meeting with a pledge of the league. Pledge allegiance to the flag. Please remove your hats. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, first item is open session. Has anybody got anything for open session?
Drew's got something on your open session.
I just was wondering how the proposal is going for the committee.
I put out on my Facebook post a couple of weeks ago, or week or so ago, for volunteers to join that committee so that we could get them to these gentlemen and get a committee seated and get moving on that. And if somebody like Drew Stone happened to be interested to volunteer to be on that committee, even be chair of that committee, I'd be thrilled to add that to my records.
I'll volunteer.
Great. You too, Gary?
Yeah.
That's the Committee for Special Events and Community Beautification. Doing like the Two Nights Festival.
You'd be a shoo-in for that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what we've got.
So you've got three members right now.
Right there.
All right. We're getting a good start. Okay, so noted.
Well, I guess it kind of falls in this, like, the South Saginaw Grange, they're doing their big bean supper this Saturday night again for the fall, and they have it in the summer and spring. Can that be added to the town's Facebook page?
Absolutely. I did it in the spring.
Okay, well, it's another one this Saturday. But should somebody from the Grange get ahold of you to let you know what's going on and so on and so forth? How do you do that? How would you like to do that?
I think I've got Bling's number in my phone. Who saw?
Well, no, but I mean, they ought to get ahold of you and let you know so if you know that does the Facebook page.
Yeah, you know, I'll put a post out either tomorrow or Friday, but I'll, yeah. If somebody can get me the details, I'll definitely include that.
Since it's the spring, four, was it four, 4:30 in the afternoon, Saturday?
Kelsey will probably get the details for me. Tell me what I need to put in there.
I thought she was telling me to record.
No. Warren yelled at me about it today because the car wouldn't start and everybody screaming melting in the car, so.
But yeah, we'll definitely get that in the post.
I know they do quite a lot of stuff, but they don't, they don't. It's a pretty good resource on that Facebook page.
Yeah, but I mean, even as limited of advertising as they do, it sounds like they've got a heck of a turnout.
Well, they do, but.
Okay, any other items for open session?
Thank you, Mike.
Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Signing the minutes of the board meeting. And again, Josh will probably be back before the end of the meeting so that he can sign. Okay, moving on, item four, review of the treasurer's warrants. We're gonna start out with payroll, 79, 80, 81, and 82. Next, accounts payable, number 83, for the 50-pounder.
If we're talking pounds in terms of the British Monetary Unit, it's a whole lack of a lot more than that.
I'm talking net weight. Okay, moving on, item five, old business. First item is Two Nights Brewing Grant.
Okay, I invited John here in case anybody would have any questions on that for him. But essentially what happened is the grant we applied for through, it's actually a HUD grant, Housing and Urban Development. And as government is government, it then goes to Maine Community and Economic Development. And it kind of came through us by the way of Piscatacas County Economic and Development Corporation. But the bottom line is, we, the town of Sangaville, applied on behalf of Two Nights Brewing for a $100,000 grant so they can invest in capital equipment to expand their business. And the payoff for that, there essentially are two payoffs for the town. One is that it produces more taxable property for us. And the second is it provides jobs. It will provide three full-time equivalent positions. And we were successful in our grant application. We met yesterday morning, John and I, and John Sibco from the Anderson Skoggan Bank is helping us, helping us out with this because he's basically is a Good Samaritan volunteer and our banker because he's done a lot of, he's done a lot of work with this. Ray, what's Ray's last name?
Doug Ray.
Doug Ray.
Yeah.
From the state of Maine and John Boynton from PCE DC. We all met and figured out what our next steps are. And for us, one of the things we need to do is we need to hold a public hearing. I'd like to do that two weeks from today on November 5th. I've got the advertisement and everything already from Doug, how to run it. I'd like to get a little Bangwater Daily and run that tomorrow. That'll give us time enough to make the legal requirements of a public hearing and have that at 5:00 before our next select board meeting. And then at the next select board meeting, you, as the board, need to vote to accept, accept the grant. But because of state, federal, and everybody else's rules, we need to make sure the public hearing happens first. So the public hearing happens, and we have to advertise that in a certain, a certain way and everything. And then you vote to accept the grant. There's an environmental form that Lance and I need to look at and sign off on, which essentially, my understanding means is we need to certify that John's business isn't in a flood plain. And if it floods up there, somebody better be building an ark. So that'll be a fairly easy piece of things to take care of. And then once we get the rest of the paperwork signed, that I have to sign on behalf of the town for this grant, turned back into the state, then they will disperse the money to us. One thing we do have to do, and this will be paid for out of the grant, is we have to contact our attorney and do a memorandum of understanding between us and Two Nights that basically absolves the town of any financial liability if they don't follow the rules of the grant. And then it's a matter of John Sibco's gonna come down and meet with Michelle and I and Kelsey and talk about how the financial dispersment piece of that works. And then John can start buying his equipment and bring his bills in and make his reports to us so we can disperse the money. We're just a pass-through. We don't, you know, we don't do, no, no tax money goes into this. It's all money coming, well, none of our property taxes. It's all tax money, but it's federal tax money. We pass that through to John and he expands his business. And that's it in a nutshell. Hey, John, anything you want to add?
No, you didn't. Excellent. Explaining it to John.
I like the sounds of three more jobs in the town of Sangaville.
Yep.
And I wish you luck filling them.
Thank you.
One of the things that is a requirement for this, it's a little bit sticky, but I think, I think we're all kind of educated on how to manage it, is they need to be low-to-middle income jobs. And I've been doing a lot of work on grant writing lately, and as part of that, I've been studying demographics a lot. 25% of the town of Sangaville actually lives below the poverty line. So as I said in the meeting, I don't expect low-to-middle income to be a big barrier to us in hiring it. So this is exciting. I mean, it's got potential to really, really help their business take off and go places.
I'm really impressed with both of you. That's good.
Thank you, yeah. Thank you, Brian. All your help, that's huge.
Okay, moving on.
That's the fun part of the draw.
Item B, Town Hall Roof Update.
Actually, I, and everyone knows we're working on this grant, the $250,000 grant this fall for the Town Hall. And a big piece of that, I'll say, I met with Steve Gavoni last week on Wednesday. He came over and we sat down and met for a couple hours. A big piece of that grant application is best done by an engineer or an architect. So Steve is very engaged and is going to, you know, all the stuff you and I had concerns about, Steve is gonna, is gonna take that on. And his, and his feeling is, he said, that he thinks that'll actually work in our favor, all that Department Interior requirement in there. Because, he said, most projects, he didn't think going into this, will have the engineering work already done that we've done. So he's pretty confident that having that piece in there will be more of a help than a hindrance to us. And he's gonna help with the budget and everything on that. Well, while I had him here, he and I talked, and he called me again, and we talked this morning about the roofing company. Now, the question I asked that all of you, or many of you have asked me, is what is the contract between Roof Systems of Maine and Wentworth Partners Associate Engineering on our behalf sec? Well, there is a one. It is a word, it was a word-of-mouth agreement. And Steve said, Steve said, and he said, I can quote him on this, the word he would use is befuddled in the way they are choosing to deal with us. Because I said straight out, I said that for them to get us to pay the full bill that they're asking for, a representative of their company needs to come in and sit down before this Board of Selectmen and the Town Hall Committee chaired by Dennis and answer our questions. So otherwise, we're not writing them a check. And Steve said, I agree with your position. He said, I just have never heard of a business not willing to go meet with a client. And I said, well, I said, if you want, if there's a dead set against that, I said, I will make one offer to them. I said, if they want to accept the 18-8 and the rental on the lift as full payment to discharge this completely without meeting with us, I'm fine with that. I'll write that check. But if they want a penny over that, they need to come meet with us. So that's where we left it. He was gonna get back to them with that. So that's pretty much what I have on the, on the Town Hall at this point. Our Town Hall Committee is, Town Hall Committee and Historical Society are gonna be meeting together again tomorrow evening.
Here?
Here, 6:00. The reason you haven't heard that from me before now is because Melissa contacted me yesterday and asked, and I initially said no, and I got confused because it's 5 Thursdays in October. So I got mixed up, went back, looked at my notes and said, whoops, she's right, we do have to meet this week. But I will send everybody an email tomorrow morning.
Jeff?
Yes.
Why was there no contract?
This is a very good question.
Well, I mean, that's an oversight on somebody's part.
Right. In this situation, we're required to turn the management of this over to a engineer, which we've done.
Right, I, yeah, right, but, okay.
In other words, this is a question we can, we should ask our engineer and have a discussion going forward before we hire people to do work on our behalf. Is there going to be a contract or not?
No, so it's a conversation we're going to have with our engineer about moving forward.
So it's a learning experience.
Yes. We, we turned this project over to an engineer.
Yep.
And went with his expertise, that's what we hired him for. And we need to just tweak that as we go, very obviously.
I gotta tell you, George, I was a bit shocked when he told me that there was no contract.
Yeah, well.
I, I would like to know, like, if it was just word of mouth, I would like to have heard what the word of mouth was, how much he intended to do for wait.
The, I think that's the point of confusion, Dennis. I don't think anybody knows what they, I think there was a complete miscommunication about what was gonna be done.
The, the two guys who were doing it were of the opinion that all they were doing was fixing the broken slates and a couple of flashings. That was their understanding.
How long did they have doing that?
Off and on, the better part of a month.
I think that was, wasn't it?
Yeah, it got into two months, we had two months, right?
Yeah, that's right, because they came back and did some more.
Yeah, off and on, but it's hard to say how many hours were involved because they, some days they were here, some days they weren't.
Yeah.
I know there was some hot weather.
Yeah, I was gonna say, some of those real hot days of weather, I don't know if I can blame them for.
No, I wouldn't either, but I have no idea how many hours were involved.
I don't think that were many.
I don't think they had $56,000 worth.
Nope.
I do think that the work they did, from what I can see of it, looks like excellent quality work.
Some of the stuff is, Dennis, we looked at that, that, this north dormer.
Right.
And the east dormer. The work on those, the flashing in those valleys is, is good quality work.
Right.
What's your concern, Dennis?
Well, there's a few shingles that should have been replaced that weren't. The hip flashings, they reused the old flashing, and not copper flashing, they reused the old metal flashing. I think if I had been doing it, if I'd gone to that length, I'd have spent another couple hundred bucks and cut a piece of copper and put it there.
A lot of the work they did just doesn't make sense, I guess, as part of it, too.
Yeah, some of it.
They didn't appear to touch that south dormer at all.
No. Have they got all the leak specs?
It's not leaking to the best of our knowledge. I didn't go into data, check and see if it leaked at all, but I, you know, I don't, I think we have all of the leaks addressed.
As far as we know, it's not leaking, and there's no, I don't have the good answers.
Yeah, and I don't either.
Well, at $18,000, it'd be a pretty good buy if it's not leaking.
It's kind of what I thought.
Need to let the hand play out, I guess.
That's kind of where I was going.
And we need to, we need to take the lesson where, where we need to, we need to learn a lesson from it.
What did they want altogether to do that?
It's right in the ballpark of $56,000.
And they won't come see you?
And they won't, and this is the thing, I said, I will pay, I will pay the 18-8 that they originally quoted, plus whatever the man left was, which was above another $10,000, I think, in change. I said, we will pay that, because we initially agreed upon that. I said, anything beyond that, their representative needs to come in and meet with the select board and the town, and a joint meeting of the select board and the Town Hall Committee so that we can answer our questions. And I told, I told Steve and I told J.T. Brendel of Roof Systems of Maine, we're not refusing to pay. What we are doing is saying, we want a conversation, we want our questions asked, and we're willing to pay a fair price for the work that has been done. But, you know, you need to come in and talk, you need to come in and talk to us. Things escalated too quick without a lot of information or communication exchanged, and we need to rectify that, not just hand them a check for $56,000.
Okay, moving on. Rules on burying a person.
Well, they have to be dead, Jeff.
Yeah.
Beyond that, I'll turn it over to Michelle.
Well, I think you missed A and B, didn't you?
Oh, I did, I did, I skipped right over it. Let's rewind, we'll go to item A, donation from Friends of Sangaville Fire.
Yeah, I guess that's me. So Friends of Sangaville Fire bought a ventilation fan with fundraised money. And basically, I'm just looking for you guys' approval to accept that as a donation so it can be covered under Town Insurance and belong to the town of Sangaville. It sounds like it's cheap, maybe not, about $5,000, so it would be something that we'd want on the insurance policy, and that you guys accepting it as a donation doesn't technically belong to the town of Sangaville yet.
I make a motion that we accept the gift from Friends of Sangaville Fire.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, vote? It's a vote.
I'd say probably on behalf of the town, we should say thank you to Friends of Sangaville Fire for doing the fundraising work and adding a valuable piece of equipment to the town.
Well, that's what all the, you know, that's what all the things like the boot drive and little fundraisers that we do go towards, and it's just something that, the one that we've been using is roughly 30 years old and takes three men and a baby to move it. This one's battery operated, one man can carry it with one arm, 100 times faster.
And this is an injector as opposed to a positive pressure?
It's positive, yes, but it's, it uses two 60-volt Milwaukee batteries instead of, they run for 45 minutes off those, as opposed to a gas.
If you're still forced ventilating 45 minutes later on the average house fire, there's not much to save, so.
Okay, well, thank you, Matt. Next, snowplow contract. I'd like to make a motion that we table this until Josh is present. Is that a second?
Second. Why don't we bring that back the next meeting?
We'll bring it to the next meeting. I just, it's one of those things Josh really ought to be.
Yeah. Is that okay with you, on an environment?
Back to burying people.
Item C, rules on burying a person.
Okay, so we had a gentleman come in and he wants to buy a lot in one of our cemeteries, but he wants to know if it's possible to do it without a vault and do no embalming fluid. He wants a natural burial.
What's the state law say?
No box, no bag, no nothing?
Just a wooden, just like the old time, wooden box.
Wooden box.
It's only once, I feel, don't have boxes anymore, I think the new ones do.
Didn't Clint Rowan build one for his father?
I don't know.
I think he did.
I think he built his father's.
He did, in my father's wood shop.
I remember that.
Yep.
That was just short time.
That's what they do for remains and just.
I, I don't know if he was embalmed or not, but I mean, I know that Clint did build his dad's casket.
Well, embalming shouldn't affect the burial process, I wouldn't think.
And if it did years ago.
Is there a state rule on those or state law?
Not that I'm aware of. I, I'm not sure on any of that.
Who would we talk to?
Actually, no way to look. Maybe Ethan Ames, actually, now that we're talking about it, would probably be the best place to go, unless you know.
Ethan would, Ethan would at least know where to ask, question.
Okay. So right now, we don't have, we don't really have any cemetery rules, which we really need to because I had a woman, it was this huge tree that was once a shrub, and it overtook all the stones, tipped them over, made a mess out of them, he went down and cleaned it up, got the, got the tree out of the way. But we have nothing governing your cemeteries.
And actually, we, the only thing we have is, Bridie, when she was town manager, did a draft of a policy, and she's provided me with that draft. And you and I can sit down sometime and go through that and maybe bring a policy back here to this board to review. I was gonna actually ask Dennis about his vast experience, if he'd ever run into something like this before.
Not really.
I think you got the right answer, Michelle, I think.
We'll call Ethan tomorrow and bring it back to the next board meeting.
Just dig it two feet deeper and bury it. It did years ago.
Okay, moving on, item seven, Town Manager's Report.
All right, well, we've covered a chunk of it. The Town Hall I've already covered, the Two Nights PCE DC grant. We've covered some other grant applications I've been working on. My, my wife is the executive director of a nonprofit agency, and she goes trolling for grants all the time, much like Matt and I do. And she stumbled on one, she said, this really fits the town of Sangaville more than the Good Samaritan agency, so she forwarded it to me. And you'll be interested, are you familiar with the Quadra Trike Corporation?
They do Jeep parts and stuff?
Yes.
Yeah.
They have a foundation, and they do a $3,500 grant, dollar grant twice a year to help with trails and stuff like that. I sat down and looked at it, and I said, you know, I said, $3,500 would go quite a ways, quite a ways towards a trail, a potential trail we talked about in the Forestry Committee, which was on the town lot down on the Bean Hill Road into that vernal pool. It seemed to really fit this application pretty well. So I went ahead and did a grant application for that and submitted it. So that is one that we submitted. As I reported last week, the Daughters of the American Revolution have a historic preservation grant that with Michelle and Kelsey's assistance, I'm near completion on that. To get that turned in next week, we're gonna be asking for $6,000 to help with veterans, buy some veterans markers and lot markers. So that kind of covers our grant work, and like I said, we're still, still working on the big grant for the Town Hall. But I've got, Steve is gonna be doing a big chunk of that. It's, uh, but, uh, I've got, Steve is, uh, gonna be doing a big chunk of that. Uh, there's a financial piece in there that, uh, John Zimko's gonna come down, has volunteered to come down and help with on that. And, uh, as far as writing some of the other components, they haven't actually put the grant application out yet. So I'm just kinda getting material put together so I'm ready to go when it does come out. Uh, it's due December sixth, so probably the state will make it available on November thirtieth or something. Uh, EMS project, Matt and I've had some conversation around this. Uh, I'm still waiting, my national, still waiting for my, uh, the national certification to bounce into the office of Augusta and have them accident license me. And then we're gonna sit down and start doing some formal planning on that. I'd like to see us get an E M T class underway here, probably February is kinda what I'm thinking. South Sangerville Grange Road Survey, uh, we've mailed Kristen all our required, requested documents and basically waiting for Judge to issue a warrant so that Sackett and Bright can do the survey. Uh, Route twenty-three property, and I don't wanna throw you under the bus here, but they may have some questions for you. Uh, I forwarded correspondence to you guys from Stephen Wagner. Did you see that? And, um, well, I have it here. Basically, that's the.
I did read this.
Okay. Uh, we have discussed this previously and, uh, uh, basically what I said was, I said, we hadn't, he contacted me about it, uh, Monday, I guess. I said, we got a meeting, we got a meeting to Wednesday night. Let me run it by the selectman one more time, make sure there's no, no issues, anything that, nobody has any reservations or other questions about it. If so, I'll contact you Thursday and maybe go ahead with that. So that, basically, to qualify that or synop, I mean, the synopsis is, this is the agreement. We've worked out the settlement agreement that has him, uh, pay our court costs a five hundred dollar fine and requires him to keep the property cleaned up. Now, in the meantime, uh, he has rented, he is, he has got the property on Route twenty-three out of foreclosure. He has rented the property and Sangerville Fire had to make a trip down there, what was it, three o'clock Monday morning? Uh, for the illegal bird. But, to our knowledge, Mr. Nesbit has no, yeah, has no knowledge or, um, no reason to believe he's involved or aware of the situation. And all this is completely his tenants. I, is that fair to say?
Fair to say, yeah. Same basic principle, same things were going on, just different personnel. He was not there when we got there. And so from what I can understand, it's just his tenants doing the same thing that he was doing there, so.
So was forestry involved in that?
They were. Um, they had asked after the last time that we notified them and have a ranger sent out that day instead of waiting. Uh, because it was spreading into the woods, we went in before the ranger got there and just knocked down the outskirts. And then the ranger got there, took their pictures, and then we put the rest of it over. He opted to give the gentleman a warning because tries to give everybody one warning. And so we kind of agreed that this was the only warning of the, the understanding that if we're back again, he will be seeking, you know, monetary settlements for the time.
Another area since we last met, uh, I've had just some discussions, marijuana grows. I've had several residents ask me if there's anything we can do about these large marijuana grows in town. Uh, I was in a meeting with Lance Farah, the Town Manager from Brownville here recently, and we discussed it. And they are drafting an ordinance right now to address this situation. And they're gonna get a, a copy of that ordinance so we could take a look at it and see if we might wanna adapt it, uh, and put it before our planning board and electorate and whatever. Uh, Willard Starboard Park, I attended the October meeting of Admiral Wade Lodge and, uh, presented the idea of a Willard Starboard Park and they were enthusiastically supportive of it. Are, are willing to help, uh, put money towards this project. And, uh, I think at this point, uh, basically, we put it on the warrant in March at the annual town meeting. And if the people want it, we can proceed with the fundraising and, and make that project a reality. Uh, the Annual Veterans Day Ceremony, uh, that was well received last year. It was very popular. And I kinda started to put the plans together to do a repeat of that this year. So that would be the Town Manager's Report, Road Commissioner Report. Uh, paving is complete. Uh, I was very, very happy with Pro Seal. Once they finally showed up, they weren't good at communication through the summer, but once they finally showed up, uh, they did a great job. They were a professional organization. Butch Lemieux and I, between the two of us, we were there with them probably ninety percent of the time they were putting pavement down. We watched to measure, we watched to measure the temperature. Uh, we asked questions that they were really good about answering. Uh, like I said, they, they did a quality job and they kept it under budget for us. Not hugely under budget, but a little. Um, the, uh, cost of paving was a hundred and forty-five, nine seventy, which was, uh, uh, for both, both projects. So, winter sand, uh, I didn't check. They're supposed to start holiday tomorrow, correct? And Butch knows he's gonna be up there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Although Friday.
Is it Friday?
Friday.
Friday.
I was thinking of Friday.
Friday, Saturday.
Yeah, Friday and Saturday.
That's what you told me.
Right, I'm, I'm a day off here.
As long as you guys just got planned out, uh, I don't have to. We've got five turtle loads of salt sitting up there. I don't have to go in. So, and you're all set to cover it when we're done, right?
Yep, we'll be right there.
Uh, uh, Road, Road Committee met just prior to this meeting. We discussed kinda what we have for money left for this year and, uh, as the bank account is drawing low and, uh, time to do roadwork in the year is drawing, uh, nigh, uh, we're gonna replace, we're gonna do a couple of culvets on the Silver's Mills Road. We're gonna do some work on the Flanders Hill Road, ideally getting ready for, for paving for that. And we're gonna look at the, uh, shoulders, do something with the shoulders on the newly paved section of the line road. And that is essentially my report.
Very good. Okay, next item, Select Board Concerns. The salt sand's getting put up. It's gonna be covered and ready to go.
Looks like it.
Couple people asking about that. Just clarifying, that's gonna be done.
Ask you how much, Ellen, how much they hold?
Uh, fifteen hundred yards, I think.
Yeah.
And we brought five hundred yards of rusty. So we actually, we actually get good, good buy on all our, our sand. Rusty uses as well and Ellen uses as well.
Okay, moving on. Item ten, Executive Session. We do indeed have an executive session tonight, so at this point, we'll conclude this part of the meeting.
Thank you.
See you, George.
Thank you guys.
See you, George.
Thank you.
This is the part where I stay, right?
This is what you said.
I want to be, I think it's a good idea.
See you, George.
Yeah, I'll see you guys.
Okay, tonight we do have an executive session. Um, two items to be discussed. Confidential records, one M S, one M R S A subsection four oh five six F. Second item, Personnel Matter, one M R S R A subsection four oh five six D. Make a motion, we enter executive session?
Second.
And vote? The time is six forty-one, we're entering executive session. Yeah, the time is eight sixteen, we are returning from executive session. First item on our executive session, uh, the confidential records. We reviewed a poverty abatement.
I'd, I'd make a motion that we accept or that we approve the poverty abatement.
Second.
Discussion? See and no discussion, vote? It's unanimous vote. Second item, Personnel Matter. A Town Manager's contract is expired. We discussed contract items and we expect to see a contract assigned at our next select board meeting.
Make a motion we adjourn?
I second that motion. The time is eight seventeen, we are adjourned.